Section would be, would be at the level of the pedestrian, therefore thereby increasing both literally and figuratively the hierarchy of the pedestrian at this location. So by doing that, we can rectify the steep driveway grade coming out of Brackmans and solve that issue. We can also create the new ADA compliant ramp with the crosswalk on that side, provide some overhead lighting to really enhance the lighting at the crosswalks, make that a lot more visible. Creating some curb extensions to really shorten that crossing distance. As you can see, on the Matthew Station side, the new curb extension actually comes out to the parking and then would move the pedestrian out in front of those parked cars. And then all of that ends up shortening the pedestrian crossing distance. All of these in concert really enhance pedestrians, not only pedestrian safety, but pedestrian comfort. Again, by elevating that, putting in all these elements that really enhance that safety and comfort of the pedestrian, and also reinforces slower behavior of the vehicles, alerts the motorists to more of the fact that, to expect pedestrians at this location. By doing this, we can start to reassign the focal point for pedestrians crossing from, from what can be a very stressful crossing at Trade and John, and what is currently a stressful crossing here, to one that is much more in concert with pedestrian activity, and really more of a focal point and front door for cross, people crossing between your town hall complex and the businesses and that side of Trade Street. Juan?
Good evening. This is the 25% design level cost estimate. The estimated total project cost is 690,000. And the estimated construction cost is 413. So the proposed improvements are in alignment with the long-term vision and with the downtown, downtown mobility study. The improvements include, the improvement of the long-term vision include a realignment on Matthew Station, installation of a new sidewalk to fill the gap to Town Hall, and include a road diet from four to three lanes on North Trade Street that include median islands, and it will add a traffic calming effect to the intersection and improve aesthetics. The two projects have been coordinated so that no rework will be needed at the west side of North Trade Street, and no rework will be needed at the north side of Matthew Station either.
Before we take questions, I just wanted to direct you to the budget worksheet. You know, I love these things. So the estimate, the total project cost for the, just the intersection is at the top of the budget worksheet. But then, I took this to the development review team, which is planning, parks, police, fire, and public works, and presented the plans, and they got super excited about it, and especially about this picture. I think we all realize there is a gap in the public sidewalk here. And, and I was asked to come up with an estimate to do not just the intersection, but also that gap, because remember I said in October, there's a call for projects, well, a call for projects I think is coming out soon, but the deadline is October for STBGDA, Direct Distributable Funds from CARPO. It is a reimbursable grant program, and the total project cost to do the intersection and the sidewalk down Matthew Station Street would be 1.2 million. Again, it's reimbursable, so the town match would be around 250. But then you saw the construction costs on our own dime for just the intersection, just the construction cost is around 413. So that's something to keep in mind, too. And I guess, direct us how you want. We are happy to take questions, any of us now on this.
Mr. Higgins?
Susan, is there any beacon or light or anything to indicate somebody's moving across the intersection, or they just stand there and start walking and hope people stop?
There's not. One of the, one of the reasons that there's not is, again, it would enhance, by completing all of the elements of the raised intersection, you're telling the motorists that this is a pedestrian-first place. So consistent with design guidance, these would be the things that would be done. We would not anticipate the need for additional flashing lights or beacons or, or things like that at the intersection. The other thing that's a little bit ambiguous about the flashing beacons or those kinds of control is, they seem to be a lot more effective at mid-blocks, and there can be some driver confusion at an intersection such as this. So we like to, like to reserve those more for mid-block crossings as well.
I made the comment because I see drivers continuing to go through the intersection when people are halfway across and, while they're walking daily. I mean, I see that almost every time I drive through there, so they're not stopping now when people are in the middle of the road. So, I don't know, I'll take you at your word. I think it's, you know, much, much improved, but I would still be concerned that drivers may not stop.
Understood.
And we can retrofit that, too. Those are pretty easy to retrofit later if we do the design, and we think, you know what, you need to light up this intersection with those beacons. They're solar, and they can be, communicate wise.
Or a lot of enforcement with our police department.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. In, in your presentation, it has lighting relocations. The two overhead light should be completed on their own, et cetera. I feel that we need four lights, one on each corner. Are you suggesting the existing two are good enough? Or did I misread two additional into?
We will be moving one, one light, one overhead light that is left of the Brickman's, will relocate it to, to this side of the, of Trade, you know, on the, on the ramp, a little bit southern to the ramp. And the other, the other overhead light will bring it from the east side, that corner, and will push it to the north corner on Matthew Station. With two lights, with, with two of those lights will be enough to, to illuminate the crossing.
Well, there's two lights there now, and it's not enough.
So the, I walked the side a couple of times, and one of the lights, the light that is to the north is covered by the canopy of the trees.
Okay.
And the light that is on the southern side of the intersection is too far. So the Federal Highway Administration recommends 10 feet from the crosswalk, and currently it's about 20 feet, 20, 20 something feet.
Thank you. The other point I want to make, please, is, I brought this up a couple of years back because after a meeting, my car would have been this white truck, and it was dark, and I was turning this direction, and I didn't see this person starting to cross. You know, I waited for traffic, et cetera, and then traffic stopped or, you know, was interrupted, and I went to turn, and this person was just going. I don't have a concern as much with this driveway, and here's why, because that's a delivery driveway, and its deliveries are done during the daytime. What we want to do for safety is make these pedestrian crossings safe for pedestrians, number one. And that's why I'm, I'm trying to question the lighting, and to your point, is there going to be a hawk signal or a flashing or something? We love the lighting down by the restaurant at the other crossing. If that's too expensive, I understand, but one last point is, this area is already raised, and nobody's slowing down. I, I assume that the new paint job will enhance that, but it's all about the pedestrian safety for me.
Mr. Urban?
Susan, walk me back through this again, because we were talking about this intersection, and you talked about the sidewalks. So I have a series of questions. Let's just start with the sidewall aspect of it. We have a rendering here, and it says, "Fill gap in with public sidewalk." And then, you know, it says, "Matthew Station Street Sidewalk, $554,000." What is the breadth and depth of that scope of work?
It's a great question. So that's a recommendation that you're going to see soon out of the mobility study, but because the call for projects is before you'll see that, I wanted to put an estimate together. This is to connect the missing gap that's from Pizza Peel down to the electric charging station where you have to walk in front of the businesses.
Right.
That person's great to work with. They know that that's being used as a public sidewalk, and, and they're fine with that. I feel like it places a burden on that property owner to accept that as a public sidewalk. And so people can still use that, but to provide a sidewalk in the right-of-way to help disperse that traffic and, and let those businesses use that front edge as they need to for sandwich board signs or benches or whatever they want to put out there. People frequently go to the end of the brick wall and turn, only to find that they're faced with a row of trees. And then we created that little hatched walkway back to the sidewalk in front of the businesses to get people back on the sidewalk. Then they got to cross back over by the electric charging station. So this is to, is to consolidate the lanes on Matthew Station Street and close in that median and install a sidewalk from Trade Street to the driveway, the second driveway by the bank.
The second driveway where the charging station's at.
And that's where the sidewalk picks up by the parking.
But this doesn't include any conversations that planning staff had looked at this several years ago, and had talked a lot about flipping the parking to create more of an on-street parking look with a sidewalk and all, and sure to change that dynamic? That, is that on the table or off the table?
It's off, it's my understanding it's off the table. I came in at the end of those conversations, and the property owner was not in support of it.
He still wants his parking, and he thinks that that internal lot works better. Okay, so that, that answers that question. And realizing there's a huge contingency in these things, it really hyperinflates these numbers, which really freaks you out. So what you're telling me, though, is that we could be off and running on our own independent project and pay a, a good amount of money, but you're saying there's an STBGDA grant available, and, and that's why you went to this ultimate design approach with the 80/20?
Correct.
Okay.
What's the deadline about?
Deadline of that, or when do we need to apply?
So it's sometime in October is the deadline. The official call hasn't come out, but because Dana is so involved, she gets the information early.
But they don't give us much time to put stuff together, though, do they?
I mean, it's, it's more than what they used to give us. They used to give us two weeks. Now at least we'll, we, we know ahead of time, we've got at least two months.
And some of the things that do make this project attractive, there's no right-of-way purchase, and there's an element of design that's already taken place that helps make some more, instead of a kind of a pipe dream, this is potential reality.
That's right.
So I guess my, the, the question is, though, then we would, is this, this would have some strategy here. There's some chess going on from the aspect that is, we, we pull our nuts and cons into this basket, and we want to go for this grant, and if it doesn't come to fruition, we have the backup position of, we have dollars and cents here about how we could probably phase this work.
That's right, and thank you for reminding me. I, I did forget to direct your attention to the phasing memo that was provided by Alta as to, as to we have, we could phase it with design, we could phase it with starting to implement some things now.
So do we have to move this off top dead center this evening to make sure that we're targeting that seminal timeframe, or does it have any bearing on?
I think so.
You know, I think we could go even as late as September, if you want to think about it a little bit more. But I think, I think we have what we need to get started on a draft for the grant application, but we definitely need to know by the September 22nd, 23rd, 23rd meeting, thank you, if that's something that you want to stretch. Because we're not going to go apply for the grant without you all giving us the thumbs up on it, because it's a big chunk of money.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Meldon?
Thank you, Mayor. Susan, the, the red stamped, red applique, red paint that in five years is going to look like it does in front of Bean Town in Thai Taste, is there a better product, is that product better today than it was when we put that down?
Do you guys feel passionate? I can take this one. You want to talk about it?
Can. Okay. Yes, there, there are better products.
First of all, it's not the same as in front of Bean Town. It's, it's what's on the crosswalks now. It's going to be closer to what's on the crosswalks now.
Right, right. There are, there are better products. We've been using some, been using something called Endura Blend on some projects in Memphis, and I believe your memo with the phasing has an image at the bottom that shows that product. Unfortunately, it's in black and white, but it shows the curb extensions, and it's more of a red, and it's sprayed on. It's actually sprayed on, it's not rolled on or stamped, so it's almost like a template goes on, and it has a thickness to it as well, about, I think it's about an eighth of an inch. And it is much more durable. It's color fast for 10 years and resistant to plowing or, or any kind of tire travel. So it is much better than the old stamped, stamped asphalt kind of coating.
Okay. And one follow-up question, Susan, if I may. The amount we've already paid Alta engineer and the money we've already got in the game, can that be applied to our match?
No.
All right, thank you.
You would think, but no.
So, Mr. Mayor, one other thought, it does sound like we're, like this strategy of trying to go for this grant. The grants do take time to get approved and the money be allocated. I do think we should probably consider, let's, let's use lighting as an example, spending X amount of dollars to move the lights now, even though you'd lose the grant. I don't know if, and paving, you know, what are the other, what are the super-low-hanging fruit that just help us along in the meantime while we wait for this grant to come through and the funding dollars to come through? I think we should, at the appropriate time, consider that, too. Just not do anything.
Good idea. Okay.
Let me ask a question about the medians that are, you're showing the one at the intersection of the previous picture, but then also that last one of, I think it was in Memphis, Tennessee. Those would be, just thinking about traffic and parking, those would be low enough that someone coming out of a parking place, if necessary, could back onto that. Okay. What is the pedestrian advantage of that as far as being able to cross the street? I mean, what is it really doing? Just directing traffic, or is it a, a safe area, or what, what's the purpose of that?
It, it could be a refuge area. The, the real benefit of it comes in with the lane reduction, because currently you have two lanes at this location, and then you would be going to one lane each direction plus the, the left turn lane. The condition that you have when you're a pedestrian trying to cross two lanes of traffic moving simultaneously is it puts you at risk for what we call the dual-threat pedestrian collision. So the person in the outside lane sees the pedestrian in the crosswalk, that pedestrian enters the crosswalk. If that vehicle that has stopped for the legally crossing pedestrian, maybe it's a big SUV, the driver that's coming in the left lane may not, may not be able to see the pedestrian, and it puts the pedestrian at risk for being struck by the second vehicle. You eliminate that with this configuration. You eliminate what we call the dual threat with, with this configuration. So the median is more of a placeholder at that location, because you don't need the left turn bay at that location. But it, it really is more of the, the way to reconfigure the roadway for one travel lane each direction, eliminate that, that potential for the dual-threat pedestrian collision.
Okay, so why wouldn't we take that and move it up onto the table so that the pedestrian crossing has a, a safe area to stop, if need be? In other words, as you come up the right side, as you get to that table, you know, you could skirt out onto the table around pedestrians, but I think if that was taken all the way up into the crosswalk, it would have a tendency to, to push cars down that one lane. It would also give pedestrians someplace to stop if necessary, if they felt unsafe as they're crossing. So I guess that's, if that's a material that you can drive on, and it's easy to walk over, et cetera, why wouldn't we want to do that?
I think it's something we could, we could take a closer look at. There are some nuances with the, the way that the traffic control works at the intersection. Do you want to add something?
With pedestrian refuges, and especially in intersections, keep in mind that when you introduce that ped refuge, in some cases, it creates a little more confusion. So think about the Greenway Crossing on South Trade Street. There's that pedestrian refuge there that now takes one really kind of short crosswalk, it's a pretty narrow crossing, and splits it into two shorter ones. And there's some driver confusion when there's a pedestrian crossing the northbound lanes, and there's a southbound driver. Southbound driver's like, oh, they're in that crosswalk, not in my crosswalk, so I'm just going to keep on going. And then a pedestrian is standing there. Well, that's why we have refuges, but in, in my opinion, and I've talked to other mid-block crossing experts on this, if that, if that refuge wasn't there, that pedestrian could go all the way across, because it's one crosswalk. And I think, in this case, I want to keep it as, me personally, I would like to keep this as one crosswalk, that, that mountable median island was to create a compromise between trying to slow down traffic and reduce the number of lanes, and also accommodate emergency vehicles, because it's, if it was a raised median in this block, then our emergent vehicles have no place to go if there's cars parked. So that was really, and we worked out this with some of the people that were at the charrette, too, that this raised median is preferred for that. So it may not be even as tall as that raised intersection.
Yeah, yeah, I'm assuming it's, it's just, again, the material put on the road, so yeah. Okay, thank you. Mr. Urban?
So, Mr. Mayor, I, it seems to me that there's really no need to sort of delay this motion, because among gathering is, the ask is 30K to get the design docs going. In one way or the other, this board is committed to doing some type of deal here, phasing it, or doing it all, or hoping for the grant, et cetera. And if we were to postpone this motion, so to speak, you put the design team behind by 30 days or 45 days to some degree, and I would rather come into October, November, knowing, yes, we got it, or no, we don't have it, and we move forward, we, we would be waiting for more design time to take place. And if that makes all sense, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion then, that we authorize town manager to extend the contract with the current design firm to complete the final construction plans, not to exceed 30,000, using exemption complying with General Statute 143-64.32 appropriated from the General Fund, and also to direct staff to pursue the STPGDA grant funding for both the construction of the intersection and the design and construction of sidewalk in the right-of-way extending down Matthew Station Street to existing sidewalk, with the town's required match of approximately plus-minus $250,000 coming from the General Fund, as outlined in the memo dated August 21st, 2019, from our own Susanna Habina-Rollard, town engineer.
Second.
Okay, motion been made, and seconded by, we'll give it to Ms. Dementis.
That's fine.
All right. Okay, any discussion?
No.
Okay, seen none. Let me ask one question. Susan, by doing the design phase, does that give us an advantage in the process when we go to CARPO to get this money? If you've taken this further in the process, doesn't it get better, more consideration?
Yeah, and I think this is what Hazen was saying, is that our, our right-of-way costs are very low, our design costs, because we have taken it, advanced it ourselves, Dana and I believe that makes it a much more attractive project. Now, we would have to do additional design on the piece further down Matthew Station Street, but we believe it'll be attractive to the selection committee because of those two points.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Most in carries unanimously. Okay. Thank you, Susan. Next item is receive update on the planning conference to-do list, and, well, Susan, I guess you're back up here to talk about the crosswalks at Idlewild Road Roundabout. So, Mr. Manager, how do you want to do this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Susan's going to talk about the Idlewild Road, I mean, I mean, the Idlewild Roundabout, and then I'll just talk about the other four. Are you, Susan, are you okay with that? Are you?
Do you want me to go first?
Yeah, please.
That'd be great. Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, in 2018, is that right? Was that 2018? There was a, a planning conference item, I apologize that that was 2018, and we're here now, almost the end of 2019, that just dawned on me. Anyway, to-do list item number 26, investigate moving location of the painted crosswalks at the Idlewild Roundabout. If you recall, this was a reaction to some of our residents out on that side of town saying, hey, it's, it's really kind of hard to, to cross this intersection, and what can be done about it. Specifically, though, I, I've gone out here several various times of the day to experience it myself, you know, without my reflective vest, you know, just as a regular little person walking through here. And, and the most stressful leg is the legs of the roundabout intersection are the 51 legs, because there's, you know, two exiting lanes, two entering lanes on both sides, and, and people are negotiating that at a pretty swift speed. This is the driver's view heading into Matthews, and any guesses as to what this distance is right here? It looks like about five feet, right? If someone's trying to cross, this person exiting is thinking, ooh, I got to hurry up and get out of here, because I don't want to get rear-ended, I don't want my, the rear of my vehicle hanging out into this lane. So vehicles are actually maybe, maybe going faster when they see a pedestrian, because they don't want to get rear-ended in the roundabout, when in fact, this distance is 20 feet. So there is enough safe space for a vehicle to yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk, but, but nobody feels safe here. The drivers don't feel safe yielding to the pedestrians, the pedestrians don't feel safe crossing. So Dana and I took the NC DOT, our division traffic engineer, Tony Tagle-Fieri, out to this intersection for him to experience it. We took his reflective vest and said, "Go be a pedestrian," and he had the same opinion we did, which is, this 51-leg is pretty difficult. Another challenge of this intersection is, you know, the town line is right through the middle, right? So this leg is in Matthews, the other legs are either in Men Hill or half in Matthews, half in Men Hill. So keep that in mind, too. You'll notice some great signage here, you can see it, they're very, very visible out there. On each approach, there are two pedestrian signs, one in the median and one on the edge. So there's one in the median for this approach, and there's one on the edge for the other approach. So in the intersection, there's a bunch of pedestrian signs out there. We had a little bit of a setback, because I thought by the time I'd be giving you this presentation, there would be landscaping in the center of the roundabout. We can talk about that if you want to, but I'm going to stay on task and talk about pedestrian crossings. So literally relocating the crosswalks, right, that was the, the goal of that item. So they're currently here in the intersection, what if we moved them down here? There's already a ramp on this side, we could cross them through the, the median here, you know, same with on all four corners. Another option, move them all the way down to this intersection opposite this left turn lane. You know, I love to put in a pedestrian refuge on a multi-lane road when there's a turn lane to allow people to cross, look left, cross, look right, cross, and be safe. Downside is, that's 350 feet. Dana said, Susan, don't even present that. I said, I'm going to present it anyway, just to let you know. But the others, these other ones are about 100 feet, 140, 175 from the existing crosswalk. So if I'm over here, and I want to get to this business, I walk, well, I guess I walk in the grass, and then I come up here on the sidewalk, that's great, I'd have to walk all the way down here to get across there. Maybe that's not so bad, but if I wanted to go, I think, isn't there a Nova's over here now? If I wanted to go over there, I could cross here, then come all the way back over here, and then come all the way back up here to go to Nova's or go through the parking lot. It's, it's a little out of the way, but it's not so bad. The downside being, we'd have to go through, you know, all the NC DOT permitting to work in the right-of-way. Our crews could probably do this work, it's, it's not so hard. If the DOT lets us blast out these, and close up these curb ramps, and cut out the median here and add ramps, that's not so hard. But consider the fact that, you know, we really only do one side of this intersection, only one side of this side of the intersection, and, and nothing up here. But it would help this leg, because now you can stack five cars here, and the drivers would feel like they'd be able to yield. I think the drivers would feel better about yielding to a pedestrian down here than here, where they feel like they're going to be hanging in the, in the roundabout. Cost for that, maybe around 62,000 to do that work. Option two, this came out, the- Cost for that, maybe around $62,000 to do that work. Option two, this came out, the, Tony, the Division Traffic Engineer, no, I did not go crazy with the dots. Remember when I said that it's well-signed? This is actually fewer pedestrian signs than what's currently out there. Tony got really excited about the thought of maybe using rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacons out here. These would be the pedestrian push button. They're solar-powered, communicate wirelessly, two on each approach. So, this would replace the existing static sign. This would actually consolidate two signs in the median to one post back-to-back. It's, it's pretty intensive infrastructure. Visually, it'll look about the same. Visually, it'll be actually fewer pedestrian signs, but they just light up. But it, it would cost us some more money to put these in. I have it to do the whole intersection in a later slide. Keep in mind, if we did the whole intersection, again, we need to talk to Min Hill. The DOT does not participate in the funding of this infrastructure, nor do they participate in the maintenance of it. So, we buy it, we install it, we maintain it. Third option, this has nothing to do with relocating crosswalks, but I'm always looking to the future for you and making sure that you understand what's coming next when you want to invest in an intersection. This looks a little wonky, but here we are back at, this is 51, and here's Idlewild. So, right now, there's a roundabout here. And remember, the DOT came to you and said, oh, by the way, we're going to take out the roundabout and give you a reduced conflict intersection, where there's a median that goes all the way through this intersection. And if you want to make the through movement on Idlewild, you have to turn right and make a U-turn and come back to go through on Idlewild. Remember that? What they didn't show you, but they had showed us, is they, they did look at several alternatives, like they always do, which you saw earlier tonight on, on a different intersection. One of the options they presented us was what I'm going to call a through movement allowed, left turn not intersection. I know it as a Michigan left. My family's from Michigan. We're used to driving these things. Let's leave the state out of it. The DOT is calling it a median U-turn intersection. So, you can go through on Idlewild in both directions. One of the benefits is the pedestrians also get to go through with that signal timing. So, when the through goes on Idlewild, the pedestrians also go on Idlewild. When the through is on 51, the pedestrians also go on 51. The pedestrians are under signal control, which is something I think people like here in the town of Matthews. They like pushing the button and knowing they're getting the walk signal. People are really good at it at John and Trade. I'm always impressed that a large number of people that go through there are pushing the button and waiting for their walk. Whether or not they wait for the actual walk signal, but they're pushing the button because they know the traffic, the light, they're going to get the red ball, and they'll eventually stop. The downside of this intersection, again, if, if I want to turn left on Idlewild coming out of Matthews, I need to go straight and do a U-turn down here. Left's on, from Idlewild onto 51, you got to turn right, do a U-turn down here, and go back through that way. But for pedestrians, better than the reduced conflict intersection where the median goes straight through, like I said, they'll be able to go through on the signal for this. So, option three is to say, NC DOT, will you please move forward, advance this intersection type? In the meantime, we just, we just live with the roundabout the way it is. We could retrofit it if you want to for the relocating the crosswalks. We could do, I was just at the, near the Dowd Y uptown, and they had the pedestrian crossing flags strapped to the stop sign where the pedestrian grabs the flag and waves it as they walk across the street, or flips it, or whatever they do across the street, to, to feel like they're being more visible. We could do that if you want. I don't, I haven't costed that out. I'm sure life would be happy to try and develop that device. So, here's a table of comparison for you. The option one is what you asked me to look into, relocating the crosswalks. It creates additional space for vehicles to yield to the pedestrian, but it does force the pedestrian to wash, walk an additional 100 feet out of their way. And the town is responsible for all the work, all the DOT permitting. This is something that, that's not going to happen quickly. And it would be about $62,000 to contract it out. Would, I think, would be really, really hard to get a good price on that because it's such a tiny job, and contractors can get huge jobs and, and make a lot of money right now, which is great for them. Or we could use our town forces to do this work if CJ says it's thumbs up on that. I haven't asked him yet, so I'm not going to look at him. Rectangular rapid flashing beacons is the second option that the Division Traffic Engineer suggested. It can be done easily within the existing infrastructure. For the best benefit, we would need concurrence with Min, Min Hill, and the towns would be responsible for that cost. In 2016, I asked for a quote from a supplier, and for a double-sided sign, it was about $10,000 each for, for the double-sided sign. That would be in the median. And for a single-sided signs, it was about $8,000 each.
Susan, can I ask a question on that option?
Yeah.
How does that prevent the driver from worrying about getting rear-ended?
It doesn't.
So, it's a lot of expense, and you're still going, oh, my gosh, I'm going to get rear-ended.
I, I believe the driver would still feel like, because that view showed, looks like they don't have enough room. I, I believe drivers would still be stressed out about that, you know?
So, I, I don't think that's a particularly good option for that reason.
It, it does perhaps make the pedestrian feel more visible because of the flashing light, but I would agree with you on that. And then the third option that I presented, just for you, for your consideration, understand that there's a future project coming down the, the road. If we ask the DOT to look at that median U-turn option for that intersection instead of the, the reduced conflict intersection, it does provide the most direct pedestrian route for our residents. It does require the removal of the roundabout, which they say they're going to do anyway. And it would require staff to continue to advocate for that. You know, I talked to Travis Pressler after your last meeting, and he said, yeah, sure, we, we can talk about that option, because he remembered the reduced conflict intersection and the median U-turn operated about the same. So, that's usually their, their number one thing is, how does it operate? If they operate about the same, perhaps we can get them to choose this, everyone can go straight-through intersection. Happy to take any, any questions at this time?
Any questions for Susan? Mr. Query?
On option number one, you get flowers, town, to pick up speed, and you come.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
On option number one, that, that would be out of character because that gives the car room to speed up and be going faster by the time they get there.
Possibly.
And I don't think anybody's going to go that far to make that crosswalk and go back up the other way either. That's a long way. And I'm, I'm not sure any of those options are really good for that roundabout. It's, if you go to your, I think it's number two. Can you pull that one up?
Sure.
Okay, you see where your crosswalks are? You've got two lanes coming in there. One is an automatic right turn that's already in movement, and you've got the second one in there right beside them trying to come around there, too. So, how, how are we going to protect it for the pedestrian there? I don't see we got a, they got a good crosswalk there. You see what I'm saying?
Compared to moving the crosswalks, or compared to the existing condition?
If you look at the one going to the right, coming up 51 and going out on Idlewild up there, you've got two, you've got, you've got two lanes coming in here, and you've got two lanes coming in here, too, and also here. You got, you got more than one car to worry about. You got two cars to worry about. And I don't think that's very safe to do that, because that inner one has almost a continual right-of-way. And so, they're moving when they come around, when they come around this inner, this inner bend right here, that's, that goes into two lanes, and you got to merge over at the same time. I don't, I don't see any of those being really good, in my opinion.
Yeah, we're finding that crossing pedestrians through roundabouts isn't as easy as we thought it was when we developed this. This is a standard manual of uniform traffic control devices layout that they did. Interestingly, the traffic engineer suggested we could do pedestrian hybrid beacons, which come with a red ball. It comes with an all-stop movement, which would help this leg that you're talking about, right? Because these vehicles would come up, and they would see a stop, and traffic would just back up down the street. Much more confusing on this leg if there's a stop. That, that might make people feel stressful. Now, I am hoping that once we're clear to move forward with some screening in here, people might slow down their speeds a little bit because they're not trying to beat everyone around the roundabout. We've talked about that before. So, you, you have an excellent point. It's just, it's difficult to cross pedestrians through roundabouts where people are, you know, there's, they might be stressed out, this is a free flow, right, like you pointed out, which is why I'm thinking, well, maybe I, I want to present this future condition that maybe we advocate for a signal control intersection, which our pedestrians seem to be okay with in town.
Mr. Miller?
Nothing.
Oh, I thought you had your hand up.
No, Mr. Higgins? Yes, do we have any pedestrian crash data for this roundabout? Do we know how many people have been hurt?
I don't know. I don't know if there's.
That'd be an interesting piece of data, because if a lot of people have been run over, then I would be more likely to say, let's do something, rather than if, you know, it's just inconvenient.
I know when the DOT pulled the crash data on this, they did not tell me that there were pedestrian crashes. I would hope that they would. But when they pulled it, I guess it was a year ago, people were questioning the safety data, and they only pulled vehicular crashes. But I can certainly ask.
Yeah, if we've had several pedestrian injuries, then maybe we should do something and not, not wait till 2023.
Any other questions? So, Susan, we didn't have anything specific to this particular item.
Actually, not unless you want to. This was information only based on the, the planning conference item. So, I can, I can maybe by email or whatever to Hazen provide that pedestrian, any pedestrian crash data. I'll ask our police department and NC DOT, too, to check their records.
Okay.
But no, not unless there's some other specific direction you'd like to provide for staff.
Well, I think in general, this is just kind of what you said, I guess. It's an impossible situation to come up with a good solution for. It's, and I know I've gone through there several times. I don't ever remember seeing anyone trying to cross the street as I've gone through there now. There's probably people who go through a lot more often than I do sitting up here, but I don't think it's heavily traveled from a pedestrian.
Not walking, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, interestingly, when we took the Division Traffic Engineer out there, we saw two cyclists, kind of, and a mix of in the street and on the sidewalk trying to get around the roundabout. They didn't seem too stressed about it. I was stressed for them, I guess, enough. But I am happy to do, look at anything else you want in this item, if you think about it. You, because we want to get, we want to help as much as we can, but we just, as Commissioner Query mentioned, there's not a lot that, of options. All right. Thank you very much for discussion.
All right, Mr. Manager?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. There's four items in the to-do list. One of them is the North Trade Street, Matthews Station Street discussion that we just had. Number 25 is, we've talked about the, the concept of trading full wood to DOT in exchange for the town maintaining South Trade Street. We like this idea. DOT likes this idea. However, there is a budget freeze right now because of the budget, and it's prohibiting them from making the needed, completing the paving work, and then some of the other drainage improvements on South Trade Street. So, after these improvements are made, that's when we'd work with NC DOT to make the, make the trade. Second thing deals with murals. So, you did hear the, the discussion, or you participated in the discussion about the public art policy. We think something will help move it, you know, something that we arrive at will help us move us through the, kind of the process in getting more murals and public art around. The other one is the, what I'm calling the Matthews Alive mural. That was supposed to be installed today. They got out there and they found out their boom truck wasn't long enough, so they're going to do it tomorrow. So, weather, weather permitting, I, I don't know what the weather's supposed to be, but it's always weather permitting. And then the last thing we talked about, could we do some kind of limited nature preserve on the Greer property, which is the property that's across the street on, on Sardish Road? It's about four acres there. I have written a letter to the Greer family. Then the other area we talked about is over there Covenant Day School, what typically is called Warner Park, back behind, the subdivision back there is some low land, and I sent a letter to the headmaster there at the school, Eric Davis, to see if they have any interest in preserving that area as well as open space. So, that's the to-do list update. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions for the manager? Okay. Thank you. Next item is new business. Item 11A, consider resolution reaffirming board stance on loss of local control. I'll start off with this. I, I spent the last couple of days trying to assemble a document that we could get a 7-0 vote on, and I've talked and communicated with each of you on this. So, I passed out a few minutes ago a markup of the resolution as it appears on the agenda, showing the red line and the addition and subtraction of some of the wording. Just to go through this, Senate Bill 355, the land use regulation bill, that was something that went through a number, the last time I saw was five, but I think it went higher than five rewrites. And it was worked on very diligently by the folks in the legislature. In the end, this was a bipartisan document, or excuse me, bill, that I think had four no votes in the House, one no vote in the Senate, and it was signed by the governor. So, it's over 100 pages. The League of Municipalities is working on this to provide us with an understanding. It doesn't go into effect for 18 months, and it will take a while to fully understand what this is about. So, I think from that perspective, it would not be appropriate for us to, you know, condemn this without knowing exactly what's in that bill. The fourth paragraph I took out, I, I mean, all of you know, and I've told you this, I don't like resolutions. I would prefer to work with individuals and develop a relationship that we try to see eye to eye. And I think we've been very successful with that through the North Carolina League of Municipalities and the Mayor's Coalition. We have discussed this same thing in the Mayor's Coalition, and, and due to the budget being in play in the legislature, it was recommended not to do a resolution in, in concern about intruding upon their turf and, and basically realizing that we didn't want to impact the positives that were coming out of the budget for the municipalities. So, what I did was, was took that out and tried to take the next paragraph and perhaps soften it up some from a one-size-fits-all to preferable legislative solutions from Raleigh. And then the very end, I put down there the mayor, Board of Commissioners, and citizens of Matthews, and called it "we" setting our hand on this and the seal being affixed. So, the second sheet you have is the actual write-up with the red line taken out. And this is something that I've communicated with everybody. I haven't gotten a positive back from every single person at the DIAS. But I feel like we can make this move forward with a 7-0 vote. I don't, I don't want to do a resolution with a split vote. I don't think that's an appropriate thing to do. So, with that, are there any discussions? Mr. Higgins?
Yeah, I have a few comments. I, I don't think we've been successful working with the state legislature, because I continue to put forth legislation that's not in our best interest. And I think we need to call our representatives and the, and everyone else as strongly as possible. I think a few of your edits are, are preferable. I like the fact that you're having all of us sign it. I will vote in favor of this resolution, but I think it's, it's weaker than it should be. I, I personally would like to see a much stronger resolution because it's, it's never-ending. It's every session, they continue to take away local control with additional legislation, and I don't think we've been successful in preventing them from doing that. Apparently, they're not hearing our, our cries, and so I would, I would like to be, you know, more forceful. But I will support this because something is better than nothing, and it does put forth the, the idea that we want to preserve local control.
And, and I appreciate that. That's a comment taken well. But I will say that we have worked with our representatives in Raleigh. A number of us have gone. A number of us have gone down there and talked with them. The manager and I have talked to both of them. I have communicated with them on the phone, even though there have been comments that we never talk to them at all and they don't understand what we want. The truth be told, they do understand what we want and they understand our positions. I'm not saying they necessarily agree with our positions. And I believe that we're trying to make a, a plea to them as individuals, trying to build a relationship with them. And likewise with the Metro Atlanta Mayor's Coalition, that is the large cities in North Carolina, we're at the table with Asheville and Charlotte, Greensboro, Durham, Raleigh, Wilmington, Fayetteville, and in many other cities. Burlington is another one. And we all have the desire to see this particular situation change and we will be taking that on going forward. One of the things that I think is important to, to remember is that we do have a budget that has been vetoed by the governor and it's sitting out there. And there are many parts to this budget that benefit the towns. There's many dollars in this budget that are being held up because it is in a state of suspension. And I'm not pointing a finger at anybody or blaming anybody, but this is all over the issue of Medicaid apparently. And I do question whether the governor and the legislature should be holding up the benefits to the municipalities and the operation of the towns in this state over an issue that really doesn't have anything to do with the municipalities. It's a state-level decision that needs to be made. So it's somewhat politics as usual, but in the meantime, we cannot put ourselves in a position to, to damage the progress that's being made there. I will add that the coalition worked very hard on 355. There were a number of rewrites, as I said earlier. The tree bill that went in was withdrawn because of the efforts with the coalition. And there were many other bills that came up that were modified due to the pressure from the league and from the mayor's coalition. So we have made progress. We have done a lot of good things, spent a lot of time working with Raleigh and, you know, I think if you haven't been here to, to see what that is, and you may assume that that hasn't taken place. But, so with that, Mr. Query.
I would, and I think I told you too, I, I think we could take a stronger stand and I will support this one, but I agree with Mayor Protheum Higgins that we, it's, it's not strong and they keep taking stuff away and I think we need to stay on it. Personally, if you've been talking to him in Raleigh, that's good, but I haven't heard anything back from him or what's going on, so.
And you asked your specific question. You asked your specific question.
Yes. And, and so we need to do something to get their attention and, and maybe this will help and maybe we need to keep following it up with what are your answers on these things and get them to give us an answer. But I will support it. And you did talk to me before the meeting and I did say I would.
All right. Mr. Melton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like in real estate, it's all about location, location, location. With this issue, it's all about timing. Timing is everything on, on a resolution like this and I, I think we missed the boat on it. And I'm sitting here and I'm, I'm one of seven and I missed the boat on it and I'll take responsibility. We should have had a strongly worded resolution on the desk of every state legislator in Mecklenburg County the day they sat down for the session. They should have known what the people of Matthews think. But we can't, we can't go back and change what's done. I, when I ran all three times, one of the things I told people is I wanted to be your, your advocate to Raleigh and stop them from taking local control. And local controls being taken away from us is nothing new. It's not something that's happened in this session, the previous session, the previous, it's been going on for quite some time regardless of what political party is in charge of the House or the Senate. This isn't nothing new. It's something they keep doing because somebody supporting them is asking them to do it. I will support this, but I strongly urge this council, the council, members of the council who are sitting here before, adopt a strongly worded resolution to be on the desk of all of our legislators when they take office. The citizens deserve it. They, they elected us in part to be their voice in Raleigh, to advocate for them in Raleigh. And while something is better than nothing, I'll support this if I can get people to buy in, buy into the fact that what we're doing isn't working. What Davidson is doing isn't working. What Burke County is doing isn't working across the state. They keep whittling away at local control. And it's not a Dillon's Rule thing. There are things that they are taking away from us that are unaffected by Dillon's Rule. It's, and I sometimes wonder, are these resolutions worth the paper they're printed on when they're over there? But I, I think that this is a mechanism for us to voice our opinion in Raleigh, for us to advocate for our citizens in Raleigh. And I, I would like to see something stronger worded, but I agree, timing is everything and it may not be the time for that. But whoever's sitting in my chair after December 9th, I'd encourage you to have something strongly worded at the beginning of the short session. That way they know you are Matthews and you're here to advocate for Matthews.
Mr. Urban.
If no one else is going to make any kind of statements, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion we approve the resolutions before us on the DIAS, not the one that's in the packet on the computer.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Urban, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, I didn't see your hand up. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. So Lori, you will have this available for signatures. Okay, thank you. Thank you for working together to, to get a 7-0 vote on this. I think that's important. Okay, next item is consider purchase of real property located at 131 East John Street. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the board. At the last meeting, the board discussed along with staff about the opportunity to purchase property at 131 East John Street. The board directed the manager with the town attorney to sit down with the owner of the property and try to negotiate a sale price. We worked hard to get something below tax value. The board did authorize to spend up to tax value, but at the end, the owner would not budge since we did have direction from the board that, that 1 million, tax value is So that is what we offered the owner under this purchase and sale agreement. We have a 45-day due diligence period. We have 1% due diligence money, which amounts to 16,680.
Actually, that's earnest money, Mr. Manager, not.
Earnest money?
Yeah.
Okay. So we do also recommend we finance this over 59 months. Probably since we got our bid last time, interest rates may have come down a little bit, but it would be some, something less than $400,000 per year. So based on direction of the board from the last meeting, we're recommending approval.
Okay. Any questions for the manager?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
What do we plan to use this land for?
So we have a, an adjacent, one acre piece of property adjacent. This is about six tenths of an acre. You know, we have talked about parking downtown. There's redevelopment opportunities, but there's no immediate use for the property today.
I've looked at this on the tax records along with the manager and, and also inquired about sale of a property nearby. And the thing that struck me in looking at this is that 1.2 million is the value of the building and it's consistent from a square foot perspective with other buildings in that area. But I question the value of that particular building based on those dollars per square foot. So the building's 1.2 million and the property is around 530,000, I think, which was a red flag to me because I don't doubt the property is probably worth 530,000 from a tax perspective. But the building is something that I'm not anticipating we would want or use and it's not in the greatest of shape. On top of that, the owner was, had, had filed a protest or whatever you do with a county regarding the, the valuation. So we also had another piece of property that sold up the street and it was not at tax value, if I'm correct?
That's correct.
And the building in that case is in a lot better shape. So we still have some days to complete our due diligence. I think it would be appropriate for us personally to have an appraisal done on this, to get all of the information that we can and ensure that we're spending this money wisely. If, Mr. Attorney, we can do that.
Well, you don't get a due diligence until you have a purchase and sale contract. So there is nothing, if you don't approve the contract, then there is no contract. And there, he can sell it tomorrow to the, there is another person ready to step up and buy the property.
Okay.
So.
But do we know that for sure? Do we have proof of that?
His word, that's all we have.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Miller. I mean, Mr. Melton, I'm sorry.
Do we have word from the property owner or from a second part or third party that he has a?
It's the property owner.
Okay.
We haven't seen it, though. We, we did not see the document.
And, but this, let me, let me re-ask this to make sure I heard. This isn't coming from somewhere else. This is conversations with the property.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Higgins.
Just a comment. David Blackley, who's a well-respected member of our community, said he did see the, the other offer, although Dominic did not show it to town staff or myself, but he did show it to David Blackley. David Blackley gave his word that he saw it. I don't think David would, would lie, so.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you. I would just remind the board or anybody in the audience that when we were in budget negotiations, we agreed and we talked about parking options and improving parking downtown, but we struck $440,000 out of the budget from either paving or of some form creating that lot that we already own into a parking lot. So I'm, I'm having trouble wanting to spend 1.6 million or 1.4 million on a smaller wedge when we can't afford to make it a lot as it is today. So I'm not a real fan of us buying the property.
Mr. Query.
Charlie, I reckon this is a question for you. So at this point in time, we really don't have a put an offer in except verbal.
No. We have, well, yeah, we have made him an offer. He has signed the contract and then we have not signed it because you have not authorized in, on a public session to acquire it yet.
So it is our right to either sign or not sign it and move forward?
Mm-hmm.
I, I think that the property, not, not the building, but just the piece of property enhances the value of our piece of property we have there. I do have a problem about the amount of money we, we're talking about, that it's, it's a tremendous amount of money just for the piece of land. Probably for us, it makes it worthwhile, but I don't see where it would hurt to get maybe an outside appraisal just to kind of give us a, a second guess as to where we're at and a second opinion. If he's, if he's already appealed for reduction, then he doesn't think it's worth that much either undoubtedly. So I just, I don't see a problem in, in taking the time during our time we have to, to get a, a quick appraisal on it, just to make sure that we're doing right for the citizens.
Careful now with what time we have because we have no time.
Well, have we had any time at all? I mean, could he have gone ahead and sold it anyway?
Well, he said if, if we, if we were to prove it tonight, he was not going to, he gave us his word that he was not going to sign the other contract waiting upon tonight. I mean, technically, this is your only shot at the apple because tomorrow he can turn around and sell it to, to somebody else.
Yeah. Do you have anything? Well, you guys haven't said anything yet. Mr. Higgins already spoke.
Knowing that he has appealed the property value, that building is not worth what other buildings are worth. And I know initially, I, in an ideal world, it would be great if we had that piece of land, but 1.6 million is not being good stewards of our, of our money for, for that building. It would have to be torn down and if the building is the biggest chunk of that value, I don't see how we can do that and do it in good faith of being fiscally conservative.
Mr. Higgins.
At the end of the day, it doesn't matter what it appraises for. I believe he has an offer for 1.6 whatever million dollars and he's going to take it. And if it appraises for 1.2, he doesn't care. He's going to take the 1.6. I've been told that, I don't know who would be going in there, but I've heard it's a franchisee. I think the long-term vision of the town, we have to look, this is a 50-year decision. What could we build in that space if we had it? We've talked about a pedestrian way through the middle of the property, perhaps moving the farmer's market, redeveloping it. The land is worth a lot more as one solid piece than, than our little piece with a, with that outlier there. I think Jay Camp presented a lot of possibilities of what, what we could do with that land long-term. This is a long-term decision. It's a lot of money. I'm as fiscally conservative as anybody up here, but I, as Charlie said, we have one, one shot at the apple. We let this go, I fully believe he's going to sell the property tomorrow to somebody else and we're going to miss out on a great opportunity. So that's my, my two cents on it.
Mr. Melton.
Thank you, Mayor. Charlie, if, if we have an appraisal performed on this parcel and it comes in for sake of discussion, 800,000, is that, I don't know real estate law and I don't know real estate, commercial real estate, but doesn't that appraisal become part of the public record, part of the public domain? Would, would somebody, if, if the other offer is not a cash offer, if it's a financed offer, wouldn't the value of our appraisal have an impact on the financing or the offer of another party? of another party?
It, it becomes a public document, but it's just, it's one man's opinion, that's all it is. It's not binding on any appraisal that he may have or his other buyer may have and applying for his financing. It would have no impact one, one iota.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Miller.
I just wanted to add, in my experience, if you're gonna borrow money to buy the property, uh, let's say this other gentleman or lady, whoever's gonna buy the property, if, if they're borrowing money, the bank will order the appraisal to ensure their loan, to make sure it's worth it, and they won't, they won't loan more than 80% or 90% of that value. So it actually puts the person borrowing the money, uh, to have an appraisal done unless it's cash.
Mr. Higgin.
Further comment, I was, I was president, uh, I didn't participate, but I was a, a witness to, uh, to Hazen and, and Char- Charlie's, uh, negotiations with, with the property owner. And he has stated that he does, he is not concerned if, uh, if the land doesn't, uh, appraised for the value of the tax money because if it, if that's the case, then he's gonna hold the note himself. So, uh, he is not, he is not, not going to sell because it doesn't appraise for 1.7 million dollars. He's, he's gonna hold the note himself. Uh, that's what he told us. So that would not impede him in, at all. It's more, more risk for him, but he is, he will hold the note and himself if, uh, it's not incumbent on a, on an appraisal from a bank.
So we have a mo- Mr. Urban.
Well, since everybody's chimed in, I mean, let's just have the sound tape like that. I, I've heard, obviously it's all hearsay. I've heard grumblings on the street about, um, franchise type situation or something of that nature, just taking and reusing that dog of a building. And frankly, it's a dog of a building. Um, you know, you can slap some paint on it, put some new signage on it and go about your business. Um, I, I agree with Commissioner Higgin about the long-term decision on this particular parcel, but then again, there's a big price tag associated with it. And the last time on this dais, I said, it doesn't hurt me if it goes one way or the other. Cause this is the reality of the way cities develop and grow and onward from that standpoint. The, the redeeming value of purchasing this property is A, the town continues to sort of have that ability to sort of control its growth and look at the future from that aspect of it. I think a lot of folks would be disappointed if a franchise operation moved into that situation, but I'd have to have that sort of vetting with Jay Camp a little bit further because six tenths of an acre of piece of land, depending on the way it's zoned and those things, where's that all sort of shake out? I, I will say that when you combine it with our parcel, with the access from Charles Street and John Street, that parcel in itself now becomes a very viable piece for something that we can work with, a developer, maybe a public-private relationship like we did with this town hall. I'm torn both ways, there's no doubt about it. But I mean, I'm also wondering, again, talking about a game of chess in blocking out something that might be detrimental to this town that we're not looking forward to. Um, I think we had, uh, Shinery and Refinery or something, some odd dozen years ago. And that really made for some good news, uh, in the, in the town. So I think if we, if we look at the strategy as a parcel, not unto itself, but combined with our parcel, dollar cost averaged into our parcel, that helps tremendously. I don't believe that the town should be getting into land development and things of this nature, but this is a situation where, um, we're directly affected by this. We own the land right adjacent to it and we actually have the bigger parcel. So I will tend to sort of lean in making this deal because I think we could find a public partnership, relationship. You know, we've been talking about boutique hotels, things that accentuate, uh, working with the Sportsplex. We now have a new, um, uh, Stump Town Athletic, which are, is our official Matthews soccer team. They're gonna be bringing people here as well. So the opportunities are just are abounding from that aspect of it. And I think in the long run, we will come out of that deal, uh, in a more controlled situation, better off than we are today.
Good. Mr. Higgin.
One final comment. Hazen, what did we pay for the other piece of property?
About 205,000 dollars.
Okay, so we're all in for less than 2 million dollars. I guarantee you, if we own that entire parcel, the town is not gonna lose money even if we sold it in a couple of years from now. We're gonna easily recoup 2 million dollars, I believe, for that property. So I, I think it's, uh, from a, from a, um, being good stewards of, of our taxpayers' money, uh, the town is not gonna take a bath on it. It's, it's gonna be a very, very valuable piece of property with the, with the road frontages that it has. Some developer would, would pay a pretty penny for that property.
Mr. Querry.
One more time. Before this piece of property came up, and I'm gonna go back a little ways, I asked this board about buying the BB and T piece of property, which is a bigger piece of property and a better building, and this board didn't wanna do that. They thought that was too much money for that piece. And yet, right across the road, we're gonna spend a hundred, 1,666,000 dollars for a smaller piece of property because as to ours, I, I agree with Commissioner Urban that probably in the long run, it might be, and it is kind of one of those things, it's kind of a torn vote is which way is really best. I wish we'd have bought the one across the, but that's said and done now. And everybody kept saying, well, the church has bought it. Well, it turns out the church never tended to buy it. It was bought by an individual. So we didn't check on it and we didn't pursue it, so we lost that, that opportunity, which I thought would have been a better thing for a boutique hot, uh, hotel or whatever. But, um, this, this is not an easy one to decide for our town and what we're doing for the citizens. It would make me feel better if we had an appraisal and they said it was worth every bit of this, and it would help me answer the citizens better, uh, about why we spent this amount of money. I don't know how I'd vote if you make me vote tonight.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Milton?
Before I do that, I, in, in one final for me, if, like Commissioner Urban, I, I want this property, but the world's gonna still spin tomorrow morning if we don't get this property, you know? I, I'm willing to take that gamble. And, and I've said at this dais before that I, I'd rather say I'm glad we did than I wish we had. And, and I think that applies to the, to the appraisal, um, just to make sure. There's, there's, there's nothing wrong with just double checking to make sure you're in the right. So I, I'd like to make a motion, we defer any action tonight. Approach the owner, let him know, we'd like to order a, a property appraisal. If that appraisal comes back and this board is satisfied by next meeting, I, I would take action then, but, uh, defer it for tonight, let's order an appraisal and just, just make sure. I've never spent 1.6 million dollars in one field swoop, and if I do, I wanna make sure it's the right thing.
So your motion is to defer to September 9th and direct the manager to talk to the property owner and attempt to do an appraisal on the property?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion?
You've got one now.
Yes, uh, again, I was there. The gentleman owns the property, said he's gonna sell the property, uh, immediately after tonight if we don't, don't do this. He doesn't care what the appraisal is because he's gonna finance it himself. So we're gonna lose this property if we wait for, if we wait for an appraisal, in my opinion. That's what he said. He, Hazen, am I wrong? Is that what he said?
He was, he was very confident.
He, he said, I will sell the property on the 27th if you guys don't come across. So, and I, I believe him. So, uh, I, this effectively is killing the deal. That's, if that's the intent of the board, you're, um, again, he said he doesn't care what it appraises for because he's, he's got a written offer for the current amount and he's not gonna take less from the town because we're nice people. He's, we will lose this deal if you support this motion.
Well, I will say that I wouldn't, I wouldn't enter into a contract with my personal assets, where I hadn't done enough research and looked at all the options available. And I certainly am not gonna do that for the citizens' money. So, um, I guess my feeling on this, if that's where he's gonna go with it, then no deal's better than a bad deal. And I just feel like I need to know more information than what we've got in front of us, especially when we're talking about a value of 1.2 million on a building that's not really that, in that good of shape. I mean, we're, we're throwing half of them, well over two-thirds of the money away. Any other discussion? So we have a motion to defer this to September 9th with, uh, a direction to the manager to take, to talk to the property owner and to carry forward with an appraisal of the property. Okay? All those in favor of that motion, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem Higgin voting in opposition. And all of the commissioners and the mayor voting in support of the motion. All right, um, next item is consider request for exemption of ordinance chapter 130.02 to allow the consumption of alcohol at the community center. This is coming from court, there he is. I thought you'd left.
Ah, just took a little, uh, trip to the little boys' room.
Went to the community center.
Yes, so, um, this is part of, uh, well, we received funding in FY20 to deliver an event in Fullwood Theater. Uh, the idea generated from a couple of different conversations, uh, met with the diversity committee, uh, may have been a year ago now, but, uh, just thinking of different ways to attract different people, uh, certainly food and music were one of, one of those things that, uh, you could use. Then also, last year at Matthews Alive, just being backstage with, uh, our, our music guy. And of course, it was jazz going on in the building and just looking out in the crowd, it was, uh, it was an awesome, it, it, it looked good. And, uh, just talking to him, it's like, how can we recreate this outside of the festival? And so, pretty much sort of this, the, the Cool Vibes Winter Series was sort of the, call it the birth child of those couple of conversations and also talking to staff. Uh, the idea is to recreate, uh, through decoration, uh, the roaring twenties, uh, speakeasy sort of atmosphere, smoke-free of course, but, uh, just to recreate that and attract a different group of people. And when I say different, I mean, uh, sort of two-pronged objectives for it. One, to create something that's a little bit different for the people that frequent, uh, many of our events, but then also what can we put in place to attract people that may not normally have come to the Matthews Community Center? And we do think this is, uh, one of those programs that will, I guess, fill both of those objectives. Uh, now, we weren't limited to only two, um, performances, so we were a little hesitant to call it a series, but, um, I guess it's a good problem. The Fullwood Theater is just completely booked most of the weekends. Again, what we plan to do is, uh, decorate the building, uh, and, and really drive home the theme of, uh, the roaring twenties. And so as part of that, we would like to add to the experience by being able to, uh, provide or make available beer and wine, much as we do for Food Truck Friday. And I guess depending on outcome of tonight, staff would work with different vendors and put something, again, very similar to what we have in place for Food Truck Friday in place for this event, um, including working with sponsors and different organizations that wanna be a part of the event. And with that.
Okay, any questions? Barbara?
I'll just go ahead and make a motion to approve the request to allow alcohol as part of the winter concert series in Matthews Community Center in Fullwood Theater on January 10 and March 13 of the year 2020, as outlined in the memo from Corey King, August 20th, 2019.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Querry?
I maybe didn't hear what you said either. Uh, are we limited to any type, any specific type of alcohol?
It was just beer and wine.
It's in beer, it's, it's outlined in the memo as just beer and wine.
Okay, so you are going with the memo?
Yeah, that's right, dated August 20th by Corey King.
Yep. Is that good with you, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, next item is to receive the monthly budget report. Turn to Assistant Town Manager Becky Hawk.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm pleased to let you know that this will probably be the last budget report that I have to handle for a while now that we have a finance director on staff. Not that I haven't enjoyed my time giving them, but I'm happy to pass them back, um, to the finance experts. Beth would be with us tonight, but she is attending a training at the UNC School of Government starting tomorrow morning, so she had to head up to Raleigh, but she will be, um, introduced at the board at our next meeting. So you will get to meet her. So just a couple of things to cover tonight. The first is a memo that was included in your packet, and the purpose of this memo is really just for informational purposes. North Carolina state statutes and our budget ordinance require that if any of our departmental budgets fall into a deficit at the end of the fiscal year and they are covered by excess, um, unspent funds from another department, that we just have to provide the board notice so long as the total amount transferred did not exceed 10% of the original budget that had the excess funds remaining. So we did go over in a couple of our departments, I'm happy to answer any questions about any of those specific overages that we had in any of those areas, but this is really just, again, letting the board know that we made those transfers. This does not have any impact on our overall budget. We still came in below budget for last fiscal year. So any questions on that?
Good?
Great. Um, and then, um, the regular budget report, it, uh, just covers the month of July, so it is a very thin month, um, with the new fiscal year funds available. We certainly had our fair share of expenditures, um, in the month of July, but some of that was just transfer funds into the CIP and kinda getting things set for, um, our new fiscal year. And we are short on revenues, um, just from a timing standpoint. They just haven't started to flow in for this current fiscal year, but we're perfectly in line with where we have been in previous years, so no concerns to report.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you much.
Easy crowd.
Easy, easy, thank you.
Okay, next item is the mayor's report. As most of you know, uh, the manager and his wife, uh, Commissioner Miller and his wife, um, myself and my wife and Commissioner DeMent, uh, along with a, uh, lady from Plantation Estates, Yvonne Brock, went to, um, France for a celebration with our sister city, Saint Maxine. And it was, um, beyond, uh, for me, it was beyond, uh, what I could have ever envisioned as far as, uh, uh, being polite and just being so joyful that we were there. I think all of us were taken aback by the, um, the parade and the, uh, honoring at each one of the beaches of the soldiers who had, had come ashore on the invasion. And, and what I didn't know was that this invasion was like a second D-Day and it was huge. Well over a billion men and women coming ashore, and, uh, I had no idea, uh, from my, um, North Carolina history education. So we went to each one of the beaches, put a wreath, uh, in place, went out on a boat and put a wreath, two, two or three wreaths, uh, onto the water in commemoration for the sailors who had passed away. And then we came back in and, uh, had a, a, um, bunch of speeches and we, uh, had music from a, a town band, I guess is the best way to put it, of all forties big band music. And, uh, this parade that, uh, went up and down the street with, uh, with half-tracks, with, uh, trucks. Did they ever have a tank in there?
They had a Sherman tank.
They had a Sherman tank. And this went on and on and on, and people on motorcycles being very unsafe without helmets, but they were having a good time. But, uh, what more than that was the people of the town who were out there celebrating and had American and French flags. And, I mean, it was a holiday, it was a big event, and it was... And, I mean, it was a holiday, it was a big event, and it was really incredible to see. So I think walking away from that, I felt like I didn't have an appreciation for what the people along the coast, I mean, they're literally right on the water, so what they went through under Germany's rule and then the freedom that was brought to them by the Allies and the French Resistance, so it was very interesting. And I'd invite Commissioner DeMent or Miller or the manager to add anything they'd like to that.
I'd like, Charlie was asking me about it earlier, and the best way I've described that trip, it was magical. It really was a magical trip. Things I have talked to them on the phone about or, you know, messaged back and forth, but to be there and to see them again after they were here four years ago, they really are our sisters, and it was just so solidified with this trip that they love our town and the people in it, and if any citizen from Matthews goes on vacation and goes over there, I know they will be treated the same. And for my friend who went with me, she has said so many times in telling all of her friends about it, is that she was so struck at the warmness and the friendliness and love that they not only showed us, but how they treat one another. It was a very different world and a very different culture, but I'm proud that we've made this official with Sister Cities International in DC four years ago. We've had a renewal of that partnership and relationship, and I'd like for this town and the citizens in it to do anything and everything we could to keep that strong. Our kids here don't learn about that history the way their children do. Whatever you say about France, one thing they're doing, at least in Saint-Maxine, is that they make sure that kids are educated about what really happened on their shores on August fifteenth, nineteen forty-four, and they're very appreciative to America and the other allied forces that helped them.
I would just add that we were honored to be there, treated like royalty, and to compare it to America, it was part Fourth of July, part Memorial Day, part Veterans Day, all in one, and a grand celebration. The four locations on the beach where we landed all had marble and brass plaques and anchors from the boats or a tank that they found in the water between then and now. And it was a very moving celebration to be honored as an American and a sister city at the same time. It was a total honor. And they admitted that if it wasn't for America and other allies, that they'd be speaking German today, and I think I've heard that before, but not in a thank you way. And it was beyond any expectations I had. Of course, it happened to coincide with my two-year wedding anniversary, so I'm not really sure what I'm gonna do for my three-year wedding anniversary.
He raised the bar, huh?
Yeah, I don't know. Pineville.
The quick thing I would say, and this is not specific about Saint-Maxine, but we spent time in Nice, too, and, you know, these Food Truck Friday things we have, these outdoor events, they do a ton of that. They had a huge splash park, a lot of kids out there, bocce ball, they didn't call it bocce ball, but they're very sociable, very outside.
Baton.
Baton. Baton, and bringing people together, we do that. I think that's the wave of the future, the more we can get out there and get our community together so they can see their neighbors, I think that's ultimately what's gonna make us very strong. I think, at least in two places in Europe, that we saw doing a good job of that.
Switching subjects, I don't know if everybody's gotten the emails from the lady that lives across Independence Boulevard and a child trying to get to the bus to go out to CCP, CCCP?
CP.
CCP. I was gonna say, that sounds like the old Soviet Union. Trying to get on the city bus to get out to the campus, and we've corresponded, I think Hazen got in touch with her, just as an update, have the MTC meeting on Wednesday night, and I have forwarded that information to John Lewis, who's the CEO of Cats, and also to Vi Lyles. So ramping that up a bit, and hopefully we can get that resolved. The issue is, is that would add a significant effort to the route, and there apparently are not enough people, whatever that number is, to justify that, but, you know, there comes a time when safety is more important than...
Could you, Mr. Mayor, could you reply to her? Because she sent me an email and in capital said, "Nothing has happened," basically, and then after I talked this...
Well, nothing has happened.
And right, I think that's the whole point, but in talking to staff, and Hazen, I'm very appreciative that, after talking to Dana, there was some reach out to the various departments and stuff like that, so it wasn't a passing of the baton, they dug into it, and I don't think, Irina, that's her first name, really sort of understands the lengths that everybody went to, and sometimes people get upset that they don't get the solution they want, but I mean, I think staff has done a commendable job of digging into it, and we're only getting bits and pizzas, bits and pieces of it, but we'll see what we can get out of it.
Yeah, yeah, and I put her on copy of the note to John and Vi, so, I mean, she's, but I'll follow up with a second email directly to her and kinda set up what's going on. Okay, attorney's report?
No real report, but since there's only one meeting between now and the time, it's SOS time again, so September thirteenth through the twenty-second, I'll be out of the office. I don't wanna wait and tell you that two days before I leave, so, the next meeting, so, just to let everybody know.
Think Virginia would be all right if I go with you?
Sure.
I don't wanna see you all day.
So anyway, I'll be out, actually, it's the thirteenth through the twenty-second of September.
There was one thing we didn't mention about France, it was kinda odd, the greeting of the kissing, and, you know, kinda got used to it with the ladies, but the men thing, I never, I don't think I got there, but...
Cultural decision.
Cultural decision, yes, stubble and all. Okay, may I just...
Okay, I do have two things. So one of them is, at the last board meeting, we talked about approving the school zone flashers there at Crestdale contingent upon CMS paying for the other half, we budgeted eight thousand dollars. Their chief of staff, Carol Stamp, will reach out to the mayor, actually, to say that CMS does not normally pay for those. I shared that with Susan. Susan, it felt like we could do both of them for the eight thousand dollars we have budgeted, so I don't think we need to come back to y'all. If something changes, we may end up coming back to y'all, but hopefully with eight thousand dollars, we can do all the flashers and not go back to CMS. Second thing is, I got something in the mail from Wilmington. Wilmington's doing a North Carolina National Guard museum, and they're asking everybody, they mentioned it at the Metro Mayor's meeting, and they're asking everybody to contribute a thousand dollars to this memorial. We would get a plaque, apparently, we did have a soldier, this is World War I, by the way, you know, it's kinda hard for me to say this, but I am not recommending we spend this thousand dollars. There are so many war memorials, I mean, Heckman Hill has a war memorial, and we didn't contribute to that. I feel like we'd be setting a kind of a dangerous precedent because there's so many, this is a National Guard museum, I hope I said that clearly. So, you know, if the board feels differently, that's fine, I just wanted to share with you my opinion of it's probably, it's a good cause, but a bad precedent.
Okay. Everybody, no feedback? Okay, all right.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, wait a minute, you got what you report?
Yes, sir. He said two things. Who cares?
Two things. Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second? Okay, motion made in second to adjourn. All those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're adjourned.